Okay, it's showtime. So let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain standing for Lord's Prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, and will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, roll.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mr. Malloy?
Here.
Mr. Hernandez?
Here. Okay, first, I'd like to give our next public workshop will be held here on Tuesday, December 16th, 10:30 a.m., and our regular meeting will be held here on December 17th at 10:30 a.m. as well. Madam Clerk?
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated December 2nd, 2025, and the regular meeting dated December 3rd, 2025, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number three is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number four is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number five is to adopt a resolution approving the submitted list labeled as ORC 5705.41D, November 2025, of purchase orders to various vendors as then and now purchase orders in compliance with said ORC.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number six is to reappoint the individuals listed as members of the Trumbull County Local Corrections Planning Board for an additional three-year term commencing November 16th, 2025, and ending November 16th, 2028. And I'll read the list. Eric Merkel, Darrell Rogers, Charles Morrow, Honorable Judge Ronald J. Rice, and Carol Fambro Henderson.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez? Item number seven is to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Trumbull County Engineer, the Board of Commissioners, and Eastgate Regional Council of Governments. The MOU will allow Eastgate to provide project management assistance and general engineering services in an amount not to exceed $45,000, which shall be paid from the county engineer fund as listed.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number eight is to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to submit applications and execute contracts to the Ohio Public Works Commission in regards to the year 2026, fiscal year 27, Ohio Public Works Commission funds for Hubbard Measery Road and Mines Road Improvements Project for the Trumbull County Engineers Department, and to authorize Rick Hernandez to act as the Chief Executive Officer, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, to act as Chief Fiscal Officer, and David DeCristofaro, Trumbull County Engineer, to act as Project Manager.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number nine is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the resident and companies listed, Matthew Leathers, ASW Pipeline LLC, Charter/ Spectrum, Enbridge Gas, Loomis Fiber of Ohio, and Bright Speed of Ohio, Inc.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 10 is to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute on behalf of Trumbull County the acceptance form for the 38th Renewal of the Victims of Crime Act and the State Victim Assistant Act Grant Award, an acceptance form for the Trumbull County Victims/Witness Division of the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office. The Ohio Attorney General's Office has awarded Trumbull County $75,972 in VCA and SVAA money. The county's cash match is $16,644. This will be used for the continuation of three Victims/Witness Division employees and a portion of updated technical equipment, employee training, and supplies and postage. The grant is for the period of October 1st, 2025, through September 30th, 2026.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 11 is to authorize Richard Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign and accept for use substantial completion the State Line Road Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project Number 1-S-19, located in Brookfield Township, Trumbull County Combined Sewer District, Metropolitan Subdistrict. The transportation and treatment of sanitary sewage will be based upon a resolution Number 11-2019, dated July 24th, 2019, between the City of Hermitage, Mercer County, Pennsylvania, and Trumbull County, Ohio.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 12 is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Jared Shealy for the position of drafts person with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective January 12th, 2026. This would be pay range 8, 0 years, $21.97 per hour.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 13 is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Ms. Lou Anne Simony for the position of custodian with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective December 11th, 2025. This would be pay range 3, $15.63 per hour.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 14 is to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for a request for statement of qualifications or letters of interest for consultant engineering services for the Mineral Ridge Water Booster Pump Project Number 4-W-25, located in Weathersfield Township.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 15 is to receive and place on file the monthly activities report for the Trumbull County Dog Kennel for the month of November 2025.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 16 is to approve the resignation of Michelle Goss, Chief Executive Dog Warden at the Trumbull County Dog Kennel, effective Monday, December 8th, 2025. We thank you, Michelle, for your years of public service and wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, so much it's a brief discussion. With regret, Michelle was with us for 12 years as the county dog warden. It takes a special person with a special heart for those animals, the dogs, and Michelle did a wonderful job. And mostly to the fact that, with the exception of a dog maybe being in a very bad way, no euthanizations would occur there at the pound. So we will look for a replacement. She'll be definitely missed and will be a hard act to replace, for sure. So, Michelle, thank you. And I did, while we're on this subject matter, check in with the Dog Pound today, Commissioner, and spoke with Anthony, and everything is going fine out there right now. So he has our numbers, has my number personally. So until we get to the point of a hire, I just wanted to assure the public that we're on top of it and that, you know, I will keep in contact with Anthony there to make sure that, you know, we know of any emergencies or anything that's transpiring that Commissioners should be aware of.
I'd like to say also, too, we do wish the best for Michelle. We hope she stays on as an advisor on the Dog Pound Advisory Board. I would also like to strongly stress to our board, the period is open until December 19th. We are already scheduling interviews for the week after that. And I would, I would hope that we can mandate from this board that we hire somebody for her position, the second position, by January 15th. And I would like to see that advisory board make, start making progress. We've, this has been two months since we did the board. I don't even know if they met yet or not. But we have to get moving on the Dog Pound. We have to mandate that they do their due diligence in a quick fashion, that this advisory board look at the options of everything that's on the table, and we get this Dog Pound built. So.
And I, you had mentioned about the board, Commissioners, Commissioners, Commissioner Bernard, Malloy. I did speak with, I'm sorry, with Michelle concerning the board. They have met. They did have, my understanding is one meeting. I believe that they're scheduled to meet again and then present the board with some of their findings and, you know, advising us as to what, you know, the ins and outs of maybe what we should be looking at for a pound. So I just want to let you know that they did meet, and we should be hearing from them. And I, I concur with what you had said, and Michelle did say that she would stay on the board, hopefully so. She's a great asset to have on the board, so.
And they do have, Friends of Dog Pound does have a fundraiser Saturday night, so anybody can donate or attend the event Saturday night. I see tickets are still sale on, for sale on Voices of the Dog Pound website or Facebook page.
Okay. Did we vote?
We'll continue. Yes, you did.
Okay.
Item number 17 is to appoint Attorney William Evans as counsel for the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners to provide investigation, advice, and consulting relative to an employee matter with the Sanitary Engineers Department, and to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign an agreement for these services. Attorney Evans will perform this work at a rate of $250 per hour plus expenses.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 18 is to authorize the Board of Commissioners to join with the Trumbull County Prosecuting Attorney to file an application with the Court of Common Pleas for the appointment of Attorney Aaron Glasgow and the law firm of Isaac Wiles and Burkholder LLC as legal counsel for the Trumbull County Auditor to provide legal research, advice, and defense relative to Ohio Supreme Court Case Number 2025-1506, State Exrel Alex Schaefer versus Trumbull County Auditor's Office at All. And in the note, Attorney Glasgow will provide legal counsel and representation at the rate of $225 per hour. And Attorney Danzo, I don't know if you have... Should I strike after the comma and stop it? Stop the agenda item? Okay. Okay.
I make a motion, we approve your agenda item?
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Do you want to skip to 21 and then?
Well, I'm sorry, yes. We are going to go into executive session. Do you want to go to 21 then?
Yeah.
That's just the regular agenda.
Explain? Yes.
Let's move to 21, we're gonna skip to right now. Gotcha. Deal with that after.
That's fine. Okay. Item 21 is to appoint Attorney Matt Blair pursuant to the ORCs as listed as counsel for the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners to provide legal research, advice, and consulting, including all related litigation relative to mediation of a change order request for the Sanitary Engineers Department. Attorney Blair is already an employee of the Board of Commissioners and will perform this role with no additional compensation.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes our regular agenda items, but we are going to move to public comment prior to executive session, so you don't have to stay around here longer than needed. So if you have any comment, please approach the podium, give your name.
First, Mr. Chairman, I've got a motion from the floor that I'd like to make. I can make a motion on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and our staff. We wish Commissioner Tony Bernard a very happy birthday week.
It's belated, though.
Yeah.
You don't want any...
Do I get a second on that?
I'll second that if...
Okay.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Commissioner.
Thank you.
And while we're on the subject matter, too, I want to give condolences to Raymond Smith, his father had passed. Raymond, on behalf of the Commissioners.
Yep.
Your father's passing.
Yeah, Raymond's kind of part of our family.
He's part of the family, yes.
Celebrate and mourn with you.
Move on.
Okay. Yes.
First, happy birthday, Commissioner.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Talkovich. I'm from Holland.
Okay.
This is in reference to the contract that Comfort Keepers has with the county. I'm the subcontractor for Comfort Keepers, so I just want to come and, I've given a, I wrote a statement up. I'd like to...
Sure.
Yes. It says, it has been brought to my attention that there has been questions at a level of services provided by my company in the last recent months. According to these allegations, mowing services that my company have been contracted for have not been provided in some instances. I said, nothing, nothing could be further from the truth. In fact, my company goes up and beyond in most situations as we are sympathetic to the the contract at hand being who they're servicing. We have documented each time that the services have been provided on individual sheets as well as company work logs. As a result, we find these allegations not only false, but they're like deformatory in nature. My company only meets requirements that seeds those. We have worked with different contracts, both municipal, public, and private agencies for well over a decade. We have received praise from those agencies over the years, and as far as, as close as last year, we were 2024 Reader's Choice Award winner for the Mahoning Valley. So I'd answer any questions you guys would have in that nature, but we just find them completely false in their, their nature.
Sir, how do you provide invoices to the contractor that you work for?
They're individual sheets, and then I know, I watched the video from yesterday. I guess there was some agenda about a post-it note. Those are just a recap of how many sheets were there.
Is there's an actual sheet just for that property or a general thing for all the properties in Mahoning, Trumbull, and there?
Each individual one, and then the date that they were serviced on, which is twice a month in this particular situation.
The, I, Commissioners, I had viewed the stack of, well, invoices, I guess if you call it, but...
They're thick, yes.
I guess, and I'd have to refer to Diane because there was a question as to the dates in general, July, I believe one was 9th, 2025, where there were 90 yards
in one day.
Cut in one day. I don't know if the dates are wrong or, but, you know, there was something there. There were two dates.
That, that's, that's quite possible. I have four crews that are mowing for me, so they, they can handle that.
So you could cut 90 yards in a day?
Yeah, easily.
Okay.
Well, well, I guess the question is, you know, I think she would like to see the invoices with the dates and the times that they were cut.
I...
Can you provide that?
I happened to meet with her. It was a cordial meeting. You know, I spoke to Comfort Keepers afterwards, and, you know, they, they had advised that, I guess there's a HIPAA, you know, for...
I don't know if there's HIPAA. We looked in at, for mowing lawns, only there's HIPAA. That's medical?
Right.
Whatever it is. I don't...
HIPAA is for medical information only.
Dave, can you give your, come and give your name up here, when, when your comment?
You'd have to come up to the podium.
Oh.
Again, I, I met with...
Well, I, I guess my comment, again, I'm going to reach out to, I'm going to reach out to the Prosecutor's Office that, you know, what? We need some type of invoices to pay those bills. That's my position.
I can only speak from a company standpoint.
Right, and...
Dave Merkin, Comfort Keepers, and there's a very lot of confusion over invoices. She gets an invoice. Every month, there's a form that she requires us to fill out that invoices how many we did, attached to the WellSky report that lists everybody that was done. She also gets a sheet that Mike was talking about that has the date, like you said, with all that information on it. So she does have that. There, the confusion came, Commissioner, when they said, oh, he puts a post-it note. The post-it note's just for our reference that there is 90 in here, and we know what we pay him for each one. But it's on top of each of the 90. When the, when the invoice goes into, to the office there, I mean, I don't have my stuff here. I can show you. There's an invoice that says 180 lawn cuts at so many dollars here. Attached to that is a WellSky report that has a list of every person that was billed in that 100 and whatever. In addition to that, we have the sheets that Mike provides us from each home that was cut. My, my real issue becomes here is it's perplexed, okay? And I know it's perplexing to you guys here. How does Diane come up with that number of, of people who say they didn't get service? I got to be honest, I don't know. It makes no sense. But I don't know what process she used. I don't know which sampling she called. Seniors have different cognitive abilities. All of that could come into play. I don't know. I don't know the answer, but I know that we have provided everything that has been required of us. Denny, to, excuse me, Commissioner, to go, to go to your point, I called Joe Rossi. He's the CEO of Direction Home, the Department of Aging, and I asked him about the HIPAA violation. And he said, absolutely, because you're getting referrals from my nurses, my social workers, and you're doing them not under the senior levy, but you're doing it either under Title III in Trumbull County or you're doing it in Mahoning County under Title III. So it is a HIPAA violation.
Hey, but we are providing you the names of those people, and all we're asking, so we don't know who's getting your ass cut?
Somebody's name. Also the people from Mahoning County, also the people under Title III, also those others. So...
And we redact those and just give us the Trumbull ones?
I mean, could we, I, I don't know. It's really not the right way to do. It's got to the point, and I said this yesterday, it's a small project. Diane is so micromanaging that it's become not worth our time anymore. This, 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 this. We've given it back. I don't want it anymore. So maybe that's an irrelevant question at this point, I, I, whatever, because I can't work within her guidelines for this program and maybe others, but it's, it's, it's just not right. So I hope I answered those questions. It, it is a HIPAA violation. You can call Joe Rossi. He and I spoke this morning. He may have some feelings about what's going on here that you find interesting, too. But it's, we followed the rules. Invoices are there. You know, Commissioner Bernard, I, and I know you've brought that up a few times, and it's, it's hard to explain it because even the man from the press called me, we talked this morning, and he said to me, I'm really sorry. I just didn't understand all of the intricacies of what you were talking about yesterday. And I understand that because there's an invoice for this, there's a sheet for this, there's a WellSky report for this. It means nothing to anybody other than those of us that are doing it on a daily basis.
Well, it, it means that an invoice to me, like I said, I'm not a CPA, but an invoice to me is that on such and such date, you mowed somebody's lawn, okay? And, and you should have a record of that. And if Diane's requesting to see that record, I think she has every right to do that.
She's got that. She's requesting above and beyond.
I think, you know, you're saying she, she does, and she's saying she doesn't. So somewhere we need to sit down and say, okay, where's the invoices at? That's, that's all I'm saying. I, I wouldn't pay an invoice, a bill without an invoice, and...
What do you hear the other, yesterday? I wouldn't pay an invoice. She's got whatever RFP requires us to give, and then she says, well, I'm allowed to ask for any document I want. Well, I had a physical last week, Diane. You want to go check that? You can't ask for any document. You can't ask for any document. It's not proper. I have a business to run.
Well, you need a document to say you either did or you didn't mow the grass.
And I provided that, Tony. I provided that numerous times. She chooses not to acknowledge it. She chooses not to acknowledge it.
You're saying yes, and she's saying no.
And that's the pain because it's wrong.
Okay, we're gonna...
I, I think that's where we need the Prosecutor's Office.
Diane?
Wish, I wish we could talk about, I really am upset because I got bad press out of yesterday, was not called for. Yesterday should have been a private meeting without them. I, I think there was an executive session.
I'm not sure we can do that.
Uh, we, Mr. Merkin, I, I had talked to the prosecutor concerning that, and that, and I understand your feelings about it, but we were told by the Prosecutor's Office that this does have to be handled in a public setting. And we, we, you know, we, we don't go against our prosecutor and his advice. And I don't know, I know Diane, you, you wanted to, you wanted to say something, Diane? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Merkin.
I'd like to say for a second, too, sir, yes, your, your business did come up yesterday, and it came up in general fashion of if a, if a homeowner's telling us nobody mowed their grass, we need to, we were trying to get to the source. Did, was the grass mowed by you guys or somebody else? And then Mr. Merkin's company billed on a regular schedule and just billed regularly, wasn't told anything differently? Or was it, you know, other things? That's where it came up. It wasn't, if you took it as accusatory toward your business, it wasn't that at all. We were trying to get to the source of, we had filed complaints, 33 citizens said their grass wasn't mowed. You know, so when you have that, we had to look into it. So that's where your name came up with that, not that you were accused of anything.
Diane Jokovic, Senior Levy Administrator. What I am asking for is the invoice from the subcontractor to the contractor as proof that they are billing the same number of yards to the contractor as what senior levy is being billed. That's all I was asking for, was a copy of the subcontractor's invoice. I purposely did not mention the subcontractor's name because I did not want to put it on anyone, anybody else's lap, my contract or our contract. My contract or our contract is with Merkin and Associates. In their accounts payable file, they should have an invoice from that subcontractor when their accounting department makes payment for that invoice. What I was told when I asked for the subcontract or copy of the subcontractor's invoice, I could not be given that. I was not allowed to have that. Per our contract, at any time, I can look at any books, records, accounts, not limited to invoices, materials, property, payrolls, records of personnel, condition of employment. Those are the contractors' records that I'm allowed to look at to provide proof that the service was provided. That's all I want to clarify. Thank you.
But Mr. Mr. Merkin, can?
Diane, I have I have a question for Diane. You know, that goes back to my question from yesterday that the lawns that were mowed prior to September, how did you pay those? Did you? Did you receive the the invoices necessary to pay those?
I have all invoices from the contractor. I was given, I was told that I was to pay 90 yards in September, you know, going all the way back to May. In September, when we got the invoice after receiving the complaints that they were not served all year, that's when the calls were made just to ask how you how 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 you just to get a how you like the service. That's the question that was asked. Were you satisfied? That's the word. Satisfied with the service that you've been getting for our lawn mowing service? And that's when people would come out with, we have had to use neighbors, we've had to use parents or grandparents. I'm sorry, grandchildren to cut the grass. We've had to pay for it privately. They haven't been out. They've been out sporadically. You know, we didn't take into account that every comment was they didn't get any lawns mowed. We took the ones that said they didn't see them all year and added up the dollar amount.
I understand that, but my my question is, were you provided with the necessary paperwork to pay those invoices?
Just an invoice is what I paid on from Merkin and Associates.
So is he doing something different in September that he didn't do prior to that?
No, he did not.
Why? Then my question is, why? Why do you pay it then and now?
I was getting comments back that they weren't even providing the service.
So you trusted from May to September that it was all correct and people were getting service twice a week.
Most said this has been started, this started within the last two years.
I'm really getting confused.
So.
Mike, I have a question.
It's because we have a subcontractor involved. None of our other services have a subcontractor involved. So I don't know if subcontractors, I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers, but I don't know if the subcontractor didn't do the work and bill the contractor being Merkin or if the subcontractor did bill for the number of yards and Merkin's numbers are different. I can't tell that by the paperwork I have.
So.
So that's why I'm asking for subcontract.
And according to the contract, just to get this straight, the contract specifically says no subcontractors are allowed without permission of the Board of Commissioners.
It does say that item number fifteen.
We just never enforced it.
Right.
I understand. I just want to get that clear, though, that we're not even supposed to have subcontractors.
We didn't know we had.
Well, we are.
Didn't know we had.
Subcontractor. If we know that there is a subcontractor, we would have.
Know it was being subcontracted to.
And so I have a question, if I may speak for one second here, because I've been trying. So the the case is, Commissioner Bernard brought it up. Mr. Merkin, can the subcontractor supply you with those so that we can move forward? This is, yes, if you could come.
From you. She has them from you.
Yeah, you have to go. From the, well, from the.
From you.
Yeah, what I'm asking is from the subcontractor to you.
All right, state your, hold it, Mr. State your name and.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dave Merkin Comfort Keepers. If you want that last September invoice, I'm sure Mike can pull it out and we can pull off anyone that's not Trumbull County Senior Levy. Okay, that's fine. But here's my point. We're beating a dead horse here. I've already sent you my 60-day notice. I am not continuing to do this service. So for future, for this, let's forget it. I told you, keep my fourteen.
But we're talking about you getting paid, though.
Okay, I told you, keep my 14,000. I've given you 60-day notice. I don't want to have anything to do with her and her program anymore. So so are we not just wasting time here trying to say, what do we get a pool? I'll get you that from there. And then we're done. We're done. 60-day notice is in and I'm not doing it because I can't put up with whatever she comes up with every month.
But like I said yesterday, Mr. Merkin, but now you have the senior citizens that are suffering.
That's not my problem. That's my problem.
It it it.
I've taken care of seniors for 20 years in this county damn well. If she steps in and does what she does, and that's why I said.
I understand that, but you know what? And the only thing I'm saying is we need the proper invoices for us to pay you. And and if you did, well, if you did the work and you can provide us with the with the proper invoices, I think this board will pay you.
Okay.
I think that's what I'm saying anyway. Okay.
To hear what I don't care. Keep the 14. I'll get you the stuff. I'll get you the stuff and I'll prove it. I don't care for them. Put the money back into the senior program. I'd be happy. I will not work with her in this program anymore. So why are we talking about what we should do here? It's done. It's over. We'll send you.
That's your choice, I guess.
I I. I thought it was over yesterday until you came back today again. Well, you reopened it today.
Because I had to talk to a few people. I wanted, you know, so you got your letter. So my point is, why are you still asking, you know, and she's saying we have to do this? I'm done. I'm out. I'm no longer doing the service for Trumbull County Senior Levy. And if you want my 14 grand, Mike will provide you the senior list if you want it. That's fine.
No, we, Mr. Merkin, we don't want the 14,000. We want to just, like Commissioner Bernard had mentioned, all we want is to satisfy you by having those provided to you. We understand that, and I understand your dismay that you that you you're bailing out of the program. I understand that you're not happy about it. But but I, or, okay, I mean, you're, but you know, you do, if you provided a service, then you deserve to be paid. And that, I think.
But give us the documentation.
If if we get the documentation, then we, and we don't want to, we're not wanting to keep your money, but and we understand, you know, of you wanting to disassociate with that part of the program.
I think the safest thing at this point is if he wants to turn those things in, we can address it then. If we don't hear from him again, it's a dead issue. And then we move forward.
Mike provides is billed to me. Diane still has that same question of saying, this is just a list of people that I paid them for. She still has the same question is, well, how come we didn't do?
Yeah, but she's got dates and times and people have ring cameras and relatives and people that could say someone was there on a certain date.
We'll get that to you. It's fine. It makes.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
You need to talk into the microphone, but.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, I'll get you that. We'll agree to that. But it's not, you know, because we're no longer, I wouldn't do it on an ongoing basis. And I'm not doing it on an ongoing basis because I've withdrawn from the program.
Okay. Mr. Merkin, thank you. And I and I just, just to be clear with the prosecutor's office, because this was a, you know, this was done in a in a public forum. Just to be clear, Mr. Danzo, you did mention that this could not be done in executive session and that this is the reason why we handled this the way that we did. I I just want, Mr. Merkin, I want you to know, you know.
Bill Danzo, Prosecutor's Office, yeah, I 99.9% of any, I'll just say vendor disputes or anything that come up in the county are handled between the department head and the vendor, and it never escalates to the point where we're having these kind of meetings. There is no executive session that I felt fit this situation for doing this in private. I feel like this was a discussion and deliberation ultimately on the public business of whether the board was going to you know, address this with Diane as the department head, with Mr. Merkin as the vendor. And I don't think there was any other way to do this without, you know, having some open meetings challenges. So I I agree. I don't believe there was an executive session that would have fit for that.
There's no way, because potentially we're talking money, contracts, possible legal action. There's no way we could have done that under the legal realm of things pending litigation.
There's no general exception for like contracts and things. There is for public employees and employment, but not for public contracts. And for pending or imminent litigation, the courts have been clear that either has to be a court case that is pending or it has to be imminent litigation, like there's an actual threat of lawsuit. It can't just be for legal matters that are kind of legal advice related. So like I said, it is unfortunate to have to drag everybody in to do this publicly. But at the same time, it generally doesn't get here because we generally are able as a county to resolve these kind of things just on a department head basis. And here that just wasn't successful. So.
Well, I have one other comment that once he provides the information to Diane, then I would ask that Diane get with you, Mr. Danzo, and and you review it and make sure that, you know, all the documentation is there for us to pay the vendor. I mean, because if he did indeed do the work, then then he needs to be paid for.
And I and I agree. I agree.
And but all we need to do is make sure that all the documentation is there.
Right, I agree. I just kind of want to point out, though, that that's why the board has department heads. And in fact, you've got a person who's a CPA in this department, you know, she is absolutely qualified to audit those forms. I have no problem helping out with, you know, making sure things meet the contractual obligations and such. But, you know, as far as the actual review and auditing goes, that would be really more of the department head's role.
And I understand it, but from a legal point, you can say, yes, you you believe that the documentation is there.
Again, that's really not, it really isn't a legal thing, so.
I know, but you're pretty intelligent, though.
Well, I appreciate that, but.
Okay.
Diane.
My last comment, Diane, Senior Levy Administrator. I did try to work this out behind the scenes. We had a very cordial meeting. After the meeting, I thought I need to see the subcontractor's invoices to the contractor. So I found out who the subcontractor was, called him, also called different agencies that he also cuts grass for, different programs throughout the area. And I tried to resolve it. And then I got the threatening emails and communication just shut down between Dave Merkin and I. And I'm sorry it is because I've had 20 years working with him and I've trusted. But with this particular situation, it really raises questions as an accountant, as a CPA, as to record keeping. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Okay, well, we're, with that in mind, we're going to end it there. We will do, just to sum it up, Mr. Merkin, if the subcontractor can supply you with the proper documentation that you need to get to Diane, and we have every reason to want to pay it. We understand your, you know, where you're, you know, you don't want to continue with the program. However, as, you know, commissioners with taxpayer money, we have to do the proper thing. So I want to make sure that, you know, that we that we do it in a proper manner.
Okay, we still have one pending thing, though. We got seniors out there going to need snowplows and need their driveways and need their walkways done.
I believe you are going to.
He gave us a 60-day notice. So to make things across the board official, especially while your subcontractor is here, I'd like to make a motion. We ratify the third-party agreement between Merkin and Associates, DBA Comfort Keepers and Motown Landscaping for the remainder of the 60-day period leading up to Merkin and Associates' request to terminate its agreement 60 days from now. All invoicing under this contract will be paid upon proper documentation and records received by Trumbull County. And all terms of the contract remain in full effect. This approval is permitted by Section C8 of the Underlying Personal Care, Homemaker, and Shore Finding Agreement. So what this does is, in essence, is allow you to have the subcontractor now officially and allow him to get paid and do service for the next 60 days.
Mr. Yeah, can you?
Well, I have to second the motion and then then we can have.
Yes, now discussion.
I second the motion.
Mr. Malloy, I appreciate that. We will do that with one condition. That when Mike does his snow plowing, he will send me a list of who he did each day. I will forward that to the office. They will have three days to confirm or deny. I'm not going to go through this again at the end of the month when they say, oh, they didn't get it. They will have three days, whatever, to to call that consumer and say, did they come out and plow your snow? The problem with snow plowing sometime is he's out at midnight, he plows, it keeps snowing, they wake up at five and it doesn't look like they plowed. And there's not much we can do about that. But the point is, if I I do not want to go through and into the month.
I think that's reasonable. I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you.
Does that need to be part of the?
That's just contract.
Yeah.
Well, we're still in discussion part of it. And that's agreeable with you. You'll provide the service for the next 60 days. And then, from what I understand, we will, as we get into spring, because this is a three-year contract type of a deal, Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, the services part of it, so we may need to reopen that part of the contract to put out for bid again, of which maybe your business can bid on it directly and not have to go through a provider. So, okay.
Okay, Diane, you had something? We're still under public comment.
Maybe as a public service comment is that we are going to work on an RFQ process, looking for quotes from lawn care companies and then set up contracts so that the service continues. I believe the end date for the 60 days is February 6th or something like that. So we're going to have to line up snow plow companies and lawn care companies. So I've never done an RFQ, so I got to find out how that process works.
And if I just may add too, because commissioners, we know that, you know, Comfort Keepers has provided a wonderful service, transportation and all. And a part of the record, this part of it was apart from what your service does. So, you know, I I don't want to make it like, you know, the Comfort Keepers doesn't do a great job on their transportation, what they do for the seniors. So we need, the media needs to know that, too, because, you know, you were, you know, you were on the spot here and by the request, you know, and by legal counsel, this is the way we had to handle it. So we appreciate you coming again here today and giving your your points of views. We appreciate you coming as well.
And for the record, too, with that, too, you know, we want Diane to know, too. We support Diane as our director. That is her job to audit things and abide by contracts and put them out there. So by her doing this was doing her job of what we pay her to do. And what the taxpayers pay her service to do. And that's something, Diane, thank you for that. She's reacting to a complaint. Why the complaint was made is beyond the board and everybody else, but there were complaints that were made. Like you said, there's many factors that could have caused that. And like you said, with the population we're dealing with, as she dug deeper and deeper, you know, that's where things came up and it just went south from there. Hopefully this gets the train back on the track. We move forward and and everybody just stays in their lane of what they do best and we have no more problems down the road.
Okay.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes. Okay, we're still under public comment. If there's any additional comments at this time before executive session. Yes, Mike Salomon?
Mike Salomon, Trumbull County Transit Administrator. This morning I sent you all an email. I don't know if you all received it. I know you've received it, but I don't know if you've read it yet. It's regarding my retirement. I sent two attachments. One of the attachments was the different types of transit systems we could have in this area. So my question was, do we want to maybe have a meeting next week or do you want to wait till January? That's going to be your call, but I will be available anytime next week and then anytime in January.
You're available, Mike? Well, your your retirement is in March?
In March.
Okay, so commissioners, we got a pretty busy schedule, I think, next week. Maybe if we, you know, we have some time, but we could wait in, you know, into January. That I'm just one commissioner's commissioner.
I agree with that. I think January.
We do have a lot on our plate right now for December.
And that's the reason I sent the email that maybe we can.
Yeah.
You guys can set something up in January and then we will be glad. I'll be glad to.
And we thank you for the long notice, too, because I mean, three months is adequate.
Okay, so just let me know in January if you want to do this and we'll.
Okay, Mike.
And you may have to remind us again, Mike.
Okay, still under public comment? All right, Commissioner Malloy?
Okay, with that, I'd like to make a motion. Okay, with that, I'd like to make a motion. We enter an executive session. Before I do that, one more part of discussion I got to bring up. Because this came up, I got a phone call this week, I forgot. Part of the board, part of the job that we do here as commissioners is occasionally we're asked for tax abatements. We're asked businesses come to us and say, hey, we need a little help. Can you reduce our taxes for a certain timeframe for a certain thing? So what we're basically doing is waiving the tax dollars we get in, it could be used for public use of citizens of the county in order to let a business get off the ground and establish roots, hire people, which is going to bring more money to the county, more jobs, more economy for our thing. Question was brought up to me with the Kimberly-Clark project last week of outside contractors that are coming from outside the area and working on the project. I dug in, Commissioner Bernard, I believe dug in too, made some phone calls. There are some specialty things that go on there that we don't have enough labor. We didn't have enough of the specialty people to be able to provide the jobs that are there. There is a general contractor that specializes. I mean, to do a project that big, you know, there's only a few people in the whole state, maybe in the world that can do that, something that big. So they did get a general contractor, I believe, from Toledo or whatever. Libby Group, they brought in people from all over. We do have one of our main unions that is working there. One of our locals, employing local people. But the other jobs that are there, even though there may be outside contractors that are here. I talked with the president of the Western Reserve Building Trades just yesterday again. And we do have local workers working on that project, even though they may be working for a contractor from outside the area that brings a specialty. They have had a few issues where we couldn't provide enough people. We had a couple of no shows. We had some local people that were offered the job that couldn't provide the service. The company's got to move forward to get this plant built, which we encourage. They are using union labor. They're abiding by all contractual things like that. There's no problem at all with our unions with the labor and what's going on out there. But there were some differences of number of people coming from Akron and Cleveland to work on our project here. We want to see all of our local people working as much as we can. So basically, what I'm saying with that is when we give a taxpayer, when we do those things, we do encourage and we hope that the companies utilize every asset we have here to benefit our citizens and our workers and benefit the people here. I believe that is going on to a major part with Kimberly-Clark. And there's going to be many, many more facets of the job, carpenters and electricians, everything. As this project grows and road workers and everything else that. I'm glad we had the conversation now to dispel that, but we do have local people. If you talk to any of the union presidents, you talk to Western Reserve Building Trades President, he'll tell you, we got as many local people in the job as we can have right now. And they are always pressing for more local contractors for it and specialties. But this is a big project. It takes a lot. If you go out there, it's like a bee's nest with the number of people working.
Well, Commissioner, and I, and I agree with you. And Commissioner Bernard and I attended the IBEW event at Avalon the other night. And they were actually very happy. I don't know if you had the opportunity to talk to the electrical engineers, unions, but they are really providing a large service there. So I know that the union, they say that they have, they're actually, the IBEW, they said there's so much work that they can't handle it all. So I'm happy to hear that. I haven't spoken to the Western Reserve, you know, the trades, but I can tell you that at least that portion of it, those contractors are very happy with the amount of work that they have there. And I think Commissioner, you probably heard the same.
I, excuse me, I did, but I also received some concerns about some of the local workforce out there. And hopefully, as Commissioner Malloy said, that's all been, been taken care of. And I haven't heard back from the individuals, so I assume that, that everything's good with that. So, and there's going to be a lot of work here. And like both my colleagues said, you know, we want union, local people first, if all possible.
Right. If we're going to give the tax payment, we do that. And talking to the management of Kimberly-Clark, they understand that. They knew that from day one. They've got a project to build and the quicker they build it, the more they save money. And they can't wait for us to provide the labor that's needed. If they get to bring people from the outside to get the job done, I understand that. They are using union trades to do that. And they're giving every opportunity for our tradespeople to get the jobs first. And if they didn't get it right now, there are opportunities down the road where they are aware of that. And that's all we can ask of them. It's their project, their business. They've been most cooperative so far and investing in our valley to the tune of a billion dollars. And, you know, we're, we're, we're not going to hold a project up of one painter, one electrician, one whatever. Maybe not getting to work over somebody else at this point. But we will encourage and we will fight as a board to make sure that they employ as many of our local people as they can.
Absolutely.
And if they do have concern, we do want to hear it, okay? But and to your point, Commissioner, you know, Kimberly-Clark, they're moving ahead with another $160 million facility that's two or three years ahead of schedule. So, you know, that's a good thing, all right? So, you know, they're heavily invested in our community and that's good. And we just want to keep the good working relationship throughout the county.
And there will be a point where we run out of houses, we run out of employees. I mean, with these jobs that are coming, that's a good situation to be in, in my opinion. Let Foxconn expand, let Kimberly-Clark expand, let more businesses come here. We'll figure a way to get the workers for them. That's a good situation to be in.
And we all know that there's additional lands that Kimberly-Clark owns across from Pine Avenue there, which they have been talking about the possibility of even an expansion over there, which could be huge. So we, we're looking forward to, you know, that being maybe one of their flagship plants as kind of what we were told in January. Not that that will happen, but, you know, I look forward to that. I do have one thing before the executive session. Just want to congratulate and thank Mercy Health. They had a ribbon cutting yesterday at the mental health facility there in Liberty. It's on Trumbull Avenue in Belmont. It's a wonder, I mean, if you, anybody experiencing any kind of difficulties, whether it be stress mentally, any kind of involvement, this kind of facility really is, it's a wonderful facility. And we want to thank Mercy Health for their continued footprint in Trumbull County. They really are making a difference here, in addition to the facility out at Kent Trumbull.
Yeah, I agree. They're making a heavy footprint in Trumbull County.
And we had a nice talk like yesterday with Mr. Maransky from Southwoods. And they are heavily investing in Trumbull County and have future plans for growth in our county too. So all facets, healthcare, labor, I mean, we're, we're moving forward in a very positive manner.
Now I'd like to see Cleveland Clinic or University Hospital help us out, make a footprint here also.
Agree with that, 100%.
And we're in discussion, we're trying to get one of them to come in.
We are.
You know, we're trying. I just go to executive session.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We enter an executive session pursuant to ORC 12122G3. Conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body of the subject of pending or imminent court action at the sanitary engineers department.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Okay.
Not Raymond.
Not Raymond.
Yeah.
Raymond's here.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We reconvene from executive session pursuant to ORC 12122G3, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body, the subject of pending or imminent court action at the sanitary engineers.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Aye.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, I move adjourned.
I'll second that motion.
That's right.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Thank you.